We'll call the March 20, 2025 Reno County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Staff, will you please call the roll?
Nysing.
Here.
Strand. Schaefer. Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Gertson. Welcome to everyone. We have a new, uh, new member of our board. Welcome Keith. Keith, we're gonna kinda give, uh, introductions. Would you mind just short and quick and to the point? Just give us a little background.
Here I am. Uh, Keith Nysley. I live in, uh, Partridge, Kansas. Got a family, four kids, wife and four kids. Uh, own a business in Pleasant View, Fairview Service, and, uh, keeps me busy most of the time.
Welcome.
Jack? Um, Jack Martin. Been on here five years or something. Four years anyway.
Okay. Harley?
Um, Harley Macklin. I'm, uh, grew up in the Hutchinson area, but left after education and was gone for fifty-seven years and then came back to, uh, home. And, uh, this is my, uh, starting my seventh year on this planning commission. And I've, I've learned a lot from each of us, and I'm sure you will be learning a lot from each of us as your time goes on, so we welcome you.
Thank you. Steve?
Steve Seltzer. Know you Keith. Yep. I'm not gonna go into my background, but been in, uh, Hutchinson, Reno County area for forty-seven years and been on this board for, uh, long, too, too long. What, six, seven, six years? How many terms do we get? Three?
Three, three years.
So this is my third term in terms I've got.
Yep.
Yep.
I've been on here about seven years, eight years. Russ Gertson, I live over in the Bueller area. Uh, I've been on the, on this board, so I'm into my, I'm in my third term too.
Yep.
In my eighth year, so I'll echo what Harley says. Learned, learned a lot in the eight years.
Yeah.
It's, it's, uh, it's an interesting board to be on for sure. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, in our packets, I trust you've had a chance to, uh, review the minutes from the February 20, Planning Commission meeting. Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes of that meeting as submitted.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Minutes are approved. The Kansas Supreme Court has defined a re, a conditional use permit public hearing as a quasi judicial function to ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the planning commission in an orderly manner. The planning commission will follow the fact finding procedure which is outlined in the handout in each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, that recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the planning commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written requests for additional public comment or documents based only on valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based upon new information with, which has become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this county commission policy, a public hearing is considered incomplete only if the planning commission failed to follow its procedural guidelines which resulted in a denial of due process to a party of interest or if the planning commission failed to allow an interested party an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of the, of the county commission policy, new information shall pertain only to germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing or which was unknown or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study completed after the planning commission recommendation. The planning commission recommendation to the county commissioners will accom, will be accompanied by summary proceedings before the planning commission at its public hearing along with a report and recommendations of the county planner, letters, informal petitions, and other information constituting the record of proceedings provided to the planning commission for and during the public hearing. If the planning commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case will be presented to the county commissioners at their next available meeting after the protest period expires. County planning staff, contact county planning staff or visit the website for the county commissioner agenda items. Any party who wishes to require the county commissioners to decide this case by a super majority vote may file protest position, petition pursuant to KSA 12-757 at the office of the Reno County Clerk, 125 West First Avenue, Hutchinson, Kansas, within fourteen days following the decision by the planning commission. The form is on the Reno County website, planning department webpage. I'll now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2025-02, a request by Reno Township of Reno County for a conditional use permit to establish a township headquarters for equipment storage, a meeting hall, and a stockpile location on a parcel land zone R3, single-family residential district. The property is located at 2806 West Fourth Avenue. Have any planning commission members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any planning commissioners have any conflict of interest in this case?
No.
No. Will applicant please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record? You have ten minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the, to the applicant at the discretion of the chair. Planning commission members may request clarification at the end of your presentation or may have questions.
Okay, I'm, uh, Jason Tetter, live here in South Hutch. I'm the treasurer on the Reno Township. So we, we passed, we had a, uh, an election or a ballot question to purchase this property, and that passed overwhelmingly. And, uh, so we're, now we're trying to build a building to house the motor graders because the doors are not quite tall enough to get the motor graders in the old, this is the old fire station at Fourth and Willshire. So that's the, so we're gonna build a, build a building in between the old round top and the fire station. So that's the, it's gonna be a fifty by fifty building. So, yeah, right here's the building. Like I say, here's the old fire station right here, here's Fourth Street. So, right here's the proposed building. Uh, this is the existing round top. Um, there's, I think, four and a half acres there, so we'll have a stockpile area here. There is a water well, but it's for irrigation. Um, and then the actual drinking water wells inside the building. And then over here is the septic tank. Um, it's pretty straightforward on what we're trying to do. This building, so we're gonna, our, our meetings are gonna be held in the fire station, and we had our first meeting last Thursday. So, um, have any other questions?
This equipment that you want to store there, where is that equipment stored now?
So currently, our address is 601 North Hendrix. It's right across from the state building in between, uh, Fourth and Fifth, and that's actually in the city limits, and so that was one of the things, was to get out in the actual township. So I'm sure when they put that building up back in the forties or fifties, that was in the township, and then as time goes on, the city annexes, annexed it in, so. And this is more central located to our township.
So is the equipment partially stored out of doors, or is it?
So we, so we still own the building at, at the 601 North Hendrix, and some motor graders are there, and all the other equipment is out here in the round top and here in the fire station. So this building will only house the two motor graders.
So you're gonna have a lot of other equipment stored out of doors?
Well, it's, it's still under, it's still undercover, so it's in this, we have a, like a wheeled backhoe and a loader and a dump truck which is stored in this round top. And then here we've got a little, or, or pickup and a little mini excavator. So the only equipment that we would not have, so we gotta have this building here to park the motor graders, so they'll be undercover. But everything else is undercover.
Is that a preposition to build a building? Cause the buildings aren't. Hang on, you'll have a chance, you'll have a chance. I apologize. No, you're fine. You're fine. Uh, okay, full electricity, water, what, what all are you, tell, tell us a little bit about the building.
Let's see, um, so the building, it's, it's gonna be insulated, uh, no water, uh, and we are gonna have natural gas for heating. So, yeah, no, like I say, yes on electricity, yes on natural gas, no on water.
So you, did winter heats for the wintertime, keep your graders warmed up so if it's warm, you can rock and roll?
Yeah, so we don't have problems gelling up, we can get out and clean the roads.
I get you.
And, you know, this year we've actually had to, had to do that. The last couple of years, we have not.
Okay. I have a question on. Yes. I read just a little bit about as far as fencing and screening. Is it, or do the trees kinda block where you're gonna put your piles and stuff?
Yeah, so, so there's actually, there's, there's a line of trees here and a line of trees here, and then in front they have like the, oh, that welded cattle, cattle panels along the front for the fence, and then here is just like a, it's a broke down old, kind of a cheap fence or, but yeah, those trees, those trees are, uh, kinda hiding everything from, from, uh, from the west and from the north.
From the north.
Yeah.
What type of material will be in the stockpile area?
So that'll mostly be the dirt that we dig out of the ditches, so when, when we go out and, you know, rebuild a road, most of that dirt gets washed off into the ditch, so we'll go clean those ditches. What dirt we don't put back on the road, we haul off to the stockpile area for when it floods, then we can, then we have material to go rebuild the road.
Which kinda, outside of that, okay, talking about, uh, rock deliveries, that kinda thing, what do you anticipate with that, that sort of activity?
Um, we, we mostly only use road gravel and dirt. Um, we, every once in a while we get some riprap, and we usually take that right to Pennington and dump in the big ditch, um, because, yeah, we, once they load it up, it's hard to dump it and reload it, so we usually.
So you're just playing on stockpile and gravel here, it's just mainly the dirt that you pull?
No, so we, yeah, so, uh, like currently we stockpile maybe two dump truck loads of clay balls, mostly because with the clay balls, they're all wet, and we gotta, we put them in the yard and we turn them a couple of times to get them to dry out before we take them to the road, just so it's not, doesn't turn into a swarm.
They are a slay, they are a slay.
But they're super good once they get hard. So yeah, the stockpile area, mostly it'll be dirt.
So it's not like you're gonna have thousands of tons of rock sitting there, you're gonna, it's gonna be.
We're not gonna have.
Just enough to kinda, to kinda top a road if you need to, that kinda thing.
Will there be staff stationed at that location all the time?
So, no, we have, we have three, three employees. We have two full-time and one part-time. Uh, the two full-time employees run the motor graders, and the part-time guy will run the mowing tractor for, to mow the ditches in the township. Uh, we do have, posted on the door, on the front door of the fire station, we have phone numbers to the, to the township employees and to, to the members. So if there's any questions, everyone has a cell phone now, and, uh, like I say, we also have our sign posted out front for meeting times, cause that needs to be posted also.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have ones.
Staff has some questions.
I'm the director of public works, so it makes me the director of planning and zoning. I have a question. You're here for a proposal to build a building and a permit to get that, and the buildings, the building's already built. Can you explain that to me?
Um, so Ruben Miller called us and said he had an opening, and we took it. So, yes, that's, that's what we did.
So do you realize you needed a permit before you built that?
Oh, yeah, we started the paperwork to get the permit, and Ruben had a opening, so.
So you realize that probably wasn't the right path?
Yes, I understand that that was, that, that's what, that's what we did, that's probably not the, probably was not the best choice at the time, but.
Thank you.
Understand why we ask those kinda questions. You're not the first one to come here with a building already built or partially built before, have before, so we'll keep asking those kinda questions.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, I mean. So on the other hand, we did have the vote, which was approved overwhelmingly to spend the money to do this.
And that's good, but to have the permit to build that building goes through here and you get the permit to mark. And you should've had that permit before you built that building. Or the permission from this, uh, commission to use that land use for that building.
That's something building contractors should know about, but they seem not to know all the time.
Or choose not to.
Choose not to, yeah.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, actually, the rezonings, for them to even be there.
So, yes.
Regardless of a buil, new building or not, right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is, is the rezoning so they can even have?
Correct.
Their operation there.
The conditional use permit is to have the land used there.
Not just a building.
The building is, is secondary, the first part is to have the land use of a township hall on that property, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Since there's no other questions for the applicant, we're gonna now hear from the planning
Mark Byatchen, county planner. So to help orient everybody, we are on West Fourth Avenue, right there at the intersection of Willshire, right that goes north, so we're just a few miles or less outside the city of Hutchinson. And so this property, and you can see it's zone R3, prior to that, as you heard testimony, it was an old, uh, city of Hutchinson fire station, and so at that time it was a legal use under our old zoning regulations. Twenty sixteen, we changed our, our regulations and our zoning districts, so this property is now zoned, uh, residential because we don't have commercial, industrial, or state public, uh, action zoning. Out there, uh, after the fire station, uh, was determined to not be useful for the city, it was sold to another party who actually operated an illegal business out of that, that property, right there, never did come into conformance, and then it's since been sold to township for a proposed, uh, town hall. I'd like to put on record that, you know, I spoke to, uh, an employee of the township's, like, a few months ago about the need to get a permit for the building, but also the need for that conditional use permit, and I didn't hear anything on this until you see the supplemental date when he did that on, on February 5th, so that just delayed that whole entire process. This hearing could've been held potentially in February and probably in time before the building was actually, uh, gonna be under construction. Didn't find out the building was under construction until I went out to the property this morning and just to kinda get an idea of the area, and I, I noticed that the building was already under construction, and so, plus there's other equipment out there, and like I said, right now it, it's not even legal to be, you know, out there, but they are in that process though, trying to get this, uh, into a conforming type of use. As you can see from, from the area, you got an agricultural field to the east, so there's no houses there, the small property that is, is zone R2, uh, there are no structures on that property either. Uh, to the west, you have a residential area, large lots. Further to the west, along Bloomville Road, you do have some smaller, smaller residential lots. Right to the south on, across the street from them is really, uh, an industrial type of land uses, a junkyard, it's been there for many, many decades. And then the rest of the area, uh, to the east has been, uh, additional residential, uh, properties, and so you got mainly a, a residential area. This type of land use could potentially be a lot better than any type of other commercial, uh, commercial types of land uses that could potentially go, you know, in there, which is what's operating there prior to the township purchasing this. Uh, as you heard testimony, their, their proposals to hold their town hall meetings there, also do the stockpiling of, of equipment and of dirt for that property. The stockpile area will be to the north, as you can see in the pictures I, the, uh, the equipment will be stored kind of in that hoop building, plus also the new building, you know, as well. When we look at the related, uh, land uses that we have to consider on that, the one I wanna highlight would be the, the parking area. I'd asked the applicant to submit a, a parking plan, since they are holding town, uh, meetings at this facility, we need to have places for the public to park. Uh, this is a closer view of the area, I'll go back to that. I thought I had one of the parking plan. Hmm, did I miss it? I might, I might missed it, I don't, I have it in the slide. Uh, the parking area was slated to be out in the, uh, front of those two buildings out there. I think maybe it's in your packet, but I don't have a slide of that. So, looking at that hundred by hundred area, I calculated just on the perimeter that they could potentially store up to forty cars there. That seemed like that would maybe be okay for a township meeting. I don't know how, how many, you know, people attend the township meeting, but that doesn't include the areas that would be in the interior of that big square, but I think, you know, as a board, when you look at that, that site plan there, if you think you want something a little bit better, it's within your prerogative to, to request that before you would recommend approval of that. Uh, but essentially, the area out in front of, of those buildings is all kind of a dirt or gravel type of surface right now, and that's where they plan on having a public park. Our requirements here in the, in the regulations don't require any kind of permit for a sign so long as it's not located near that intersection of, uh, Fourth Avenue and Willshire, so, uh, no permits required for that. We don't have any type of landscaping requirement so long as it doesn't get included within the conditional use permit. I do have another picture as I flashed, you know, across the screen, but the west property line and the north property line does have a, a pretty significant type of tree row that could act as a, a screening for their stockpile area. However, you heard testimony from Mr. Tetter that, you know, they're not planning on storing tons and tons of gravel or, or dirt on that property, but you can certainly recommend additional screening if you see so fit with the conditional use permit. No fencing requirements, we would have a concern if they wanted to put some type of different fence, again, near that intersection, we'd ask some site triangle concerns, and so if they propose changing that existing fence or extending it further to the south, that Public Works would like to be able to look at that to make sure we don't have any vision issues with, uh, the public and the traveling people going east-west and then north-south at that intersection. The last part of my report will discuss the, uh, factors that you need to consider when you're making any type of, of recommendation on a conditional use permit. Um, if you can read through, through those here. Uh, I looked at this mainly about, uh, the character of the neighborhood, again, you're looking at it mainly residential area, but the nature of our zoning regulations is such that any type of commercial land use could potentially go in there with an approved conditional use permit. I think having this as a township hall is gonna be a similar type of use as it would be when it was a fire station, so I believe that the, the land use would be considered appropriate for this area. So based off of that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit based off of the ten factors that you see listed in the staff report. Uh, I'll kinda go through the slides right quick to kinda give you an idea of what the area looks like. You've looked at this one, uh, pretty much the whole presentation here, but you can see where the existing buildings are, where the proposed building that you now see is already constructed is gonna be located on the property, and also the stockpile area. This is just a kind of a little bit of a blow-up area, a little bit better, better shot of where that building is located, situated behind the, the main town building and in front of the other hoop building. This would be an aerial photo looking north at the property, you can see the, the residential area, and like I say, to the south is, is the junkyard. Little bit closer view of the property, you can see the, the tree row on the north side and along the west side of the property. Little bit closer view kinda showing the, the junkyard that's across the street there. And then this is an actual Google shot of the property back in June of 2022, it looks pretty much the same there now. This would be looking west at the, the existing building, again, from June of 22, so you can see the existing, um, buildings that are on the property now. Looking further north on the property, but again, looking west, um, so further north along Willshire, but looking west, there's kinda where their stockpile area is gonna look and be. Then across the street, that's the salvage yard, the house is no longer on the property, that was removed, so it's mainly an industrial type of land use. There, there's pictures, my, uh, five conditions of approval I have listed in the staff report for your, uh, considerations. Approve of a plan of operation and site plan dated February the 5th. Uh, the parking area shall be constructed as indicated on the parking site plan. Storage of vehicles, industrial machinery, or the stockpile of materials not owned by Reno Township is prohibited without a new conditional use permit or compliance with the zoning regulations. And I think this one is important because, you know, we don't, we don't wanna have a situation where we have a storage yard for citizens to come and just be able to park, park their vehicles or stockpile their own materials on. This is supposed to be a township property and township operations out there. If they wanna get into that type of, of land use, then I believe that that should warrant a new conditional use permitting, cause that's not what the intent of this property is, has been laid out. The applicant shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local regulations, and then lastly is the county, county reserves the right to rescind the conditional use permit if they are not following any kind of conditions of approval set aside by this, this board, so. With that, I would stand for any questions. Uh, we did not have any comments from the public other than the Hutchinson Fire Department who had no issues with this request.
I got a question on Mark there. Wondering, you don't feel that there's any need for any kind of fencing around that property to kind of provide maybe applicant with a little more, less liability for people that might wander on there unauthorized and with the stockpiles and equipment sheds and whatnot?
From a county perspective, no. I, I think the liability issue should be something the township should really look at and consider. Uh, I don't know if we need to, um, look at having a.
Fence on one side, the other side is just a jump fence or something you referenced, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's just a pipe fence like that. So there, there's a gate there, I believe now, uh, so that, there's your fencing right there. Um, is there now, if they feel like there's something warranted, then I think that should be maybe up to them rather than mandating that through a, a conditional use permit.
Mark, when you reference the, um, parking site plan, uh, what is the parking site?
There should be another, um, map in your packet, I believe. It's not a very good drawing of it, but kinda shows the parking area. I should've made it into the packet. I didn't, I didn't make a slide, it was submitted after I produced this.
There's just a slight line.
You see it, Mr. Chairman? I, I did include it, did I not?
Yeah. It has, uh, parking plan written in on top.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
And there's just a slight line, I just, I just, I overlaid it a little, I drew a line right in front of, it basically is in front of that round, that existing round top and the proposed building, then it goes, covers that gravel there.
That might be right, and I do.
That's area, I mean, that's, oh, I might have a little bit. There's just. Doing the measurements, you know, from him, it's a hundred by hundred area.
It's not square, but, uh, it's angled square, yeah. I see it.
I think the most important thing is to ensure that all the parking will be on the property and not, you know, parking.
In the right of way or wrong.
Parking in the right of way or along the street, or another, or parking elsewhere. I mean, I, we don't wanna have people parking all over the property, we wanna know. We want to know kind of where the parking lot is going to be on that property.
So, it looks like the parking is pretty much in that drive area to that closet.
Yeah.
By the. Did I understand there might be as many as 30 or 40 cars show up there for a public meeting?
No, I had estimated that that hundred by hundred area would be able to store 40 cars along the perimeter of that parking area. I did not mean to infer that there's going to be 40 vehicles or 40 people parking in that area at one time, but it could potentially hold that many cars based off of what we require for a parking space.
So, maybe it's appropriate to ask the applicant, how large a group? How many people are going to come there for a public meeting?
So, I've been on the board. I've been on the township board for eight years. The largest group we had, I think, was six people. So, and they all drove separate, and we all drove separate, so there was about 12 cars.
That's why, Mike, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I don't think you can assume that that's always going to be the case if there's, you know, a concern with that, but.
It's much like our meetings here. We can have three people in the audience, or we can have 300.
Right, potentially. And so, looking at that area and doing a calculation based off of just the perimeter and not having parking spaces on the interior of that square, you know, I'm calculating that there could be 40 cars just lined up along that perimeter of that square, then you could add a few more in the center there. So, I would think that that many spaces should be adequate for their intentions.
Awesome. Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Does the applicant have anything more to say?
What?
Backup? Backup public comments? Sorry, I got ahead of myself. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case? You may have five minutes to comment. Please come forward to the podium at one at a time and state your name and address for the record before commenting. Audience members are only permitted to address the planning commission from the podium. Audience members are permitted only one time at the podium. In the interest of time, if you agree with comments previously made, please don't repeat the comments. Simply state that you agree with the previous comments and then present new information to the planning commission. Statements and questions should only be directed to the planning commission, not the applicant or staff. The planning commission may choose not to answer questions or engage with the public. Questions regarding the application can be asked to the planning commission and answered by the applicant during the rebuttal phase of this public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to comment?
I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Brandon Harmony. I'm a neighboring community of the township request. I'm kind of going to ask you guys first, is this, sorry, I'm really nervous, haven't been to a meeting before, but is this meeting really necessary if we're not following the guidelines of permits established first? So, as a neighboring landowner, I wanted to, of the wanted township headquarters, I'd like to request or propose a negotiation. About two years ago, we moved out of the country or city limits to kind of get away from the frequent disturbances of the city, and having the neighboring parcel to request the headquarters means that there will be more disturbances within our area, large vehicles coming in and out. And to respect privacy, I'd be willing to agree with the township headquarters if the township would upkeep and maintain the tree row and fencing between the neighboring properties. We have animals and livestock in that northeast part of the, I'm in R314. We have animals and livestock in the northeast section along the fence line there of the neighboring town shed, and would like to request the upkeep of the trees to maintain privacy and protection for them.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have. Thank you, appreciate it.
What type of livestock do you have in there?
Donkeys, chickens. We will eventually have cows.
Chickens can go through that fence, you know.
Oh, we have them pretty secured. If you drive by, you'll tell that we have them pretty well secured.
So, you're worried about that fence falling into disrepair at some point?
Yeah, the tree rows, the tree rows are kind of falling apart. There's several trees that are dying and rotted out that have fallen apart, and you couldn't tell in the pictures because that was a year or two ago and summer was full bloomed. But if you drive by now, you can tell that there are trees down, and there is exposure from that property to the township.
So, you would like that they clean that up?
Or upkeep and maintain the tree row for privacy.
Yeah. You mean like planting new trees?
If the trees are down, yeah, planting new trees.
Which parcel of ground are you on?
The west.
Straight west of there.
Maybe section there. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, does the applicant have any wish to rebut any statements made? You may have two minutes additional time, maybe a lot by the chair. If needed, planning commission may have additional questions.
Yeah, like I say, so.
You want to hop up to the podium for us?
So, maintaining the trees wouldn't be an issue. The only thing that we probably need to do is have a actual survey, because like I say, I own this one, this one, and this one, and I remove trees here, and I had the sheriffs out there every day. So, we probably need to get a actual survey on that line before we remove trees, but I have no problem. We can move trees and take care of trees. That's not an issue. We just got to, we just need to get our line.
I think the individual is more concerned about losing the trees, maintaining the shielding.
For privacy.
They were in there for privacy.
Either way, we probably need to have that line established so we know.
Where, whose property the trees are on.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, so that's the, and yeah, we're more than happy to work with you on, you know, if we need to plant trees or, you know, do what we need to do, but we just need to for sure have that line established before we.
Where any action is taken.
Yeah.
Understood.
But, yeah, like I said, we can.
You haven't had the property surveyed when you purchased it?
No, we did not have it surveyed, but like I said, we can, I can get that, we could probably get that accomplished here at our next meeting. I don't see an issue with getting the surveyor out there and getting that line established. So, then we can, yeah, I mean, we want to be as neighborly as possible.
Yeah.
Okay. Staff, do you have anything anymore, anything to add?
I have nothing, Chairman.
Does this commission have any further questions for the applicant or the staff? The public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of rezone or conditional use permit must be based on the factors that are listed in the staff report and found on the audience chairs. This is time for the planning commission can discuss this case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Any further discussion on this case?
I can fully understand why they want to move to a new location so that, out of the city, to have their township facility.
Going back to Dan, Don's point, you know, that the building was put up before the request was made, permit and everything, you know, that seems to be a recurring theme we're running into, and I don't know, somehow we have to figure out a way to educate the public and the contractors, particularly the contractors, I think, on these requirements, because these guys are going out and putting up these buildings. You know, we do turn them down once in a while. We had one guy had started building one, and we said no, and he had to move his posts and everything else, you know, so you run a risk by doing it that way. So, it's unfortunate, but it does happen, and it's just a matter of education, I guess, somehow.
Agree. I'll add on. I understand the anxiousness to be able to move to a new place.
Oh, yes, yes.
And spread your wings, but it's unfortunate that we have even a governing body that did not follow the rules. That's probably as big a disappointment as.
That's not uncommon, though.
No, but.
I've run into that many times over my career, so.
Nonetheless.
But, anyway, okay.
Any other discussion? If not, Chairman will entertain a motion on this case.
Mr. Chairman, I move case number 2025-02, the request by Reno Township requesting conditional use permit from Reno County zoning regulations to establish a township headquarters, township meeting hall, and stockpile location for road building materials on a parcel of land owned to R3 single-family residential district be approved based on the 10 factors and five conditions of approval listed in the staff report and as heard at this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, staff, please call the roll.
Just to clarify, the motion is to approve.
Yes.
The conditional use permit.
That's correct.
So, okay. Nysley?
Can I ask one quick question?
Just a minute. Is a yes an approval?
Yes is approval.
Yep. Just sort of make sure.
That's fair enough. Fair enough.
Nysley?
Yes.
Selsa?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Gertsen?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll be in contact with the applicant on when this will be heard by the county commissioner at another public hearing, but it'll just be a report from me on the proceedings of this meeting, and then that will be the final decision on this case.
Thank you. Next item of business, I'll kind of give it a little place of groundwork with this. Since we have two members gone today, we probably won't go into depth in this discussion, but Mark, would you go ahead and kind of give us a background of what our next project is?
Now that we've completed solar regulations, I think it's time to move forward with our next text amendment, you know, with no rest or anything like that, just keep going. And so, what you have in front of you is a copy of Article 13, and I didn't take the time to write a planning commission memo, or so I thought it'd be better just to kind of talk about it, introduce maybe what we're going to be looking at here, and then in the coming months, we can start kind of maybe formulating some ideas and some thoughts on the future direction. So, this is going to be kind of a twofold type of text amendment. What I mean by that is we'll be mending the zoning regulations, but it's also going to be related to our agricultural lot split amendment, which I believe is the number one type of amendment that I think this board kind of directed staff and believes is the next priority on our list. So, rather than try and, you know, put all that memo forward, I thought, like I said, it'd be easier to talk about. Agricultural lot splits and all lot splits for that matter is what we call an administrative type of procedure. It doesn't involve this planning commission to grant approval of a lot split or an agricultural lot split. Side note, we do have homestead lot splits, which we've done in the past. It does require your approval, but all other types of splits do not require your approval, and so you may not know all that goes into something like that. And so, if you've got property in an agricultural district and you would like to split off a portion of that for another residence, then the regulations will limit you to something between three and seven acres only. So, for example, if you have a 40-acre parcel of ground, you cannot split that into two 20-acre parcels. You cannot split that into a 10-acre and a 30-acre. All you can do is three to seven acres for the new house, and then you have the remnant parcel, which would be less than 40, obviously, but still eligible for a house if there's not a house on there already. So, that standard, two houses per 40 acres, was set by previous planning commission members and previous county commissioners as standard that, in the density that we want to see in the agricultural district, absent of a rezone and a subdivision plot where you could potentially go, obviously, greater than those two houses per 40. So, along with that split, there's certain requirements that you have to have to be able to split off that three to seven acre parcel. Those requirements are listed in Article 13, and part of those is that you have a lot width-to-lot depth ratio of no greater than three to one. Now, in our regulations, it will say that if you want to do one of these agricultural lot splits, it has to be treated as a residential parcel. So, it's a three to one split that we, ratio that we have in there. So, you can't do something that is, you know, 165 feet by 700 feet or 200 feet by 900 feet. You know, if you have 200 feet of furnished, the maximum you can go is, that's the 600. If you want something larger than that, then you got to give me more road furnished. You got to go up to 250, and then you're allowed to expand that depth out further, up to that three to one ratio. So, that worked really well. So, the background behind that was that we previously had a lot of concerns from farmers that wanted to sell their original farmhouse, but didn't want to do 10 acres, you know, because they were wanting to keep their farm ground for their income. And so, we came up with this agricultural lot split concept where now they can just split off, say, three acres or five acres around their house and keep the majority of their farm ground as their retirement income, which typically was the case here. That worked good for a lot of years, and now it seems like the pendulum is kind of swinging back the other way, where people are wanting larger acreages than just the, you know, three or five acres that the farmer wanted to split off on their original house. And so, it's created a lot of issues, and what it's doing right now is it's creating people and surveyors that are going to give me a seven-acre split, but they really want 10 acres or 15-acre parcel. And so, what they'll do is they'll create an illegal five-acre split behind them by separate legal descriptions. So, we got a seven-acre split to build their new house on, and then behind the house, we're going to have like an additional five acres that's going to be considered like an illegal parcel. Well, you know, they can never build on it. You can't do anything with it. You can't sell it separately or anything like that, but it's an illegal land division. And I know this is happening, because I go back and I'll look at the parcel and how they're mapped, and I'll see two separate parcels here. Or you go back and you look at the deeds, and you'll see two separate deeds filed where it's, you got a seven-acre deed that met my regulations, fine, and then you got like an additional three acres behind that legal description that's illegal, because they really wanted 10 acres, but the regulations prohibited them from having 10 acres in the ag, and so they're creating two legal descriptions.
Aren't they splitting a parcel three ways then?
Technically, yeah.
Okay.
Technically, yes, yeah. All my information is going to show a seven-acre split, and that's what I'm approving, but then you look at the records, oh, yeah, there's another split, so, yeah, that's another split.
What actually money changed hands was for the two parcels.
Yeah, so it's a little shady that way.
So, you might clarify for us, once that seven acres is split off of the 40, that remaining 33 cannot get split any longer. That's the last, that's the only split that's allowed on that 40-acre parcel.
So, how are they splitting off that other five?
By separate legal description and not telling me, not submitting anything.
They're not doing it the way they should be doing it.
That's why you call it illegal.
Yes.
Surveyor come out, down the state of the ground, and the other guy buys that three, extra three acres, and he's got 10 acres, and he's happy, and the guy who owns it is happy, he sold 10 acres.
But the registered deeds will record it.
As two different properties.
Because it meets their requirements. They don't care about planning zoning.
Okay.
They don't care. If it meets their requirements, then they'll record it. They have to record it.
Lack of communication between county departments there?
It's not necessarily that. I mean, you know, I know throughout my entire career, 30-plus years, you know, fighting isn't the right word. We've questioned, I guess, registered, you know, deeds on, can you send the person to us? We can talk to them and make sure that we have a legal parcel that they can build on for zoning. And to their, you know, their credit, they say, well, yeah, we'd like to. And to their, you know, their credit, say, well, yeah, we'd like to, but as long as the deed meets their requirements, they're mandated to record it. And so, and then that's, that's fine, yeah, because.
Are those statutory requirements that they're referring to?
Yeah, I believe, yeah. If it meets their requirements for somebody to record a deed, that's fine. And then when they come in to me to build on and I research it, then, ah, you're not building on that. Well, why not? Well, because it doesn't meet our zoning regulations. Yes, I recorded it the registered deeds. I took it because it met their requirements and then that's, that's fine. You know, I mean, that's, that's how things get caught. Yeah, I would, you'd like to have that, hey, go, go to planning and zoning first, but it doesn't work that way. You know, it doesn't work that way, you know, and, and I get it, you know, I mean, it meets their requirements. So that's one concern with the width to depth, you know, issue is, you know, they want more acreage. That also plays into the subdivision regulations requiring the maximum of seven acres. So I know we've had preliminary discussions, you know, in the past on just eliminating that seven acres and we could do that, but there's work to do, I think in this article as well. Do we want to keep that width to depth ratio? Because you look, I mean, it's the same thing like in the ag district, it's a four to one ratio. So if somebody had, you know, a hundred acres, a hundred and fifty acres and they wanted to split off some of that, yeah, ag, ag splits are exempt, but yet you still have to meet that four to one ratio if you want to build a house on that as well. So the, the ratio in the first place. Yeah, you know, I know that, that question's been asked, you know, many a times here by people and, you know, it was, it, it had to do with the width to depth. It, you know, it had to do with like the width to depth, but it also had to do with not creating flag lots. Flag lots, flag lots, long, long skinny parcels that open up into, you know, a bigger, bigger acreage.
Like having a thirty foot driveway.
Like a big driveway going into bigger parcels.
Yes. Yep, with, with land owned by others along your driveway.
Yeah. You know, all, all the width to depth is based off, like you look at the agricultural district, it's six sixty by six sixty and then you go down to the residential, it's one sixty-five by three thirty. So it's half of what the ag is and so on and so forth. But, but yeah, the, the concern has always been on, on the planning side is you have ten acres and then they want to split that. Well, if you only got thirty foot or sixty foot of road frontage, you can't do it because we have a minimum road frontage requirement. Now it's a hundred and sixty-five, previously it was sixty. And so it's creating issues where, okay, if you split that and sell off five acres behind your house, where's your road frontage? Well, I've got like a little twenty foot strip and it just didn't meet, it just didn't meet plan. It's not saying that it's not.
So you're saying that right now you got a minimum of a hundred and sixty-five foot road frontage?
Yes.
To split?
To split. Yeah. So, so the, the thought with that is have further discussions for another time. Do we eliminate those? Do we change the road frontage requirement? Do we go back to sixty? Do we go down to a hundred? Do we leave it at one sixty-five? What, what's the appropriate number there? Do we care at all? You know, it used to be, I think it was, nineteen ninety-four is when we first added a road frontage requirement in, in the regulations. Previously that, you didn't have to have road frontage, just give me a certain acreage and you're good to go. Nineteen ninety-four, we added the sixty foot road requirement out there.
So the, the concern on flag lots is like fire safety concerns or, or what?
No, well, I mean, fire safety, you know, because we had a case several years ago, you know, on a long skinny tractor ground. Uh, no, I think, you know, the concern was always, you know, somebody always being able to split that land again and split, even though you had, say, ten acres and it's a three acre minimum, you couldn't split it because you couldn't meet the road frontage requirement. So here a person has ten, fifteen acres that was a flag lot that was created maybe even before zoning and they want to sell a portion of that because for whatever reason, they can't do it because, because they don't have the road frontage requirement. So that's why we want to eliminate that. The width to depth ratio put in place kind of solves that because it's going to make you develop a, a square or rectangle type of, of property. And then if you ever wanted to split that, that potential does exist and you still have proper road frontage requirement. So.
The road frontage requirement just ensures that there's access to the property.
Yes.
Access.
Yeah. Yeah. So then along with that, if you look in that, what we would probably like to do is have a, a further discussion on whether our setback requirements are appropriate. When you've got an agricultural zone parcel, your setbacks are fifty feet off of the road and thirty feet on all your other sides. The residential districts, your, your setback off the road goes down to thirty and then it varies on the side and rear yard between eight and twenty feet. Is there a reason for that? Should, should they all be uniform or, or not? I think the question's always, why is it that I've got forty acres and I have to have a fifty foot setback with the parcel right next to me? You saw it here tonight on the east side of, of Willshire, you know, you have a big farm ground. If that guy wanted to build a house, it's fifty feet off the road, but if the guy that owned that parcel in the corner, if he wanted to build a house, it's only thirty feet and they can sit side by side, but the one in the ag has to be twenty foot further back. So these are all questions. If we want to change it, then what is the appropriate, you know, setback for all of them, you know, that way? Keep in mind, you know, that we've got many, many parcels that are legal, nonconforming, meaning established even prior to our current zoning regulations. They're, they're a half acre, they're a quarter acre. And so if you make your setbacks, you know, at, at twenty feet and all of it at fifty feet, you know, you could be squeezing property owners from being able to get a decent area to build on as well. Won't affect septic or well, septic or well can be put in the setback area, but it does affect building sites. So I think these are questions that we want to have when we look at what we want to do ultimately with the ag lot split and that seven acre maximum. So I'll stop at that point. Don, if you have thoughts or questions?
Well, I got a lot of thoughts. That's when we get started. A lot of thoughts. But when you hear from me, it's just thoughts because I'm not a part of this commission that I'm staff and can.
We get into.
Things to think about.
When we get into the ag lot splits, I know we've had this seven acre max, three to seven acre thing for a while. Uh, and if we change to, you know, what we've talked about is going up to like thirty-nine acres or whatever, just do away, kind of do away with that three to, three to seven and open it up so somebody can split off whatever they want. What about those poor souls that have already done an ag lot, lot split in the three to seven and they really would have liked to have had more? Or is there some way to go in and, and for them to have a one-time option to increase that split to bound, what do you call it? Boundary adjustment or whatever you want to call it?
Um, that's a good question and a good thought. Yeah, I think that's something that as we work through this, we would need to probably address because I think previously, you know, this board had discussion, I know staff has that if we do away with that, have a minimum, say, still needs to be a minimum three, whatever you do. If you want three acres and thirty-seven or so, you can certainly do that. Or if you want twenty and twenty, you can do that. But yeah, what do we do with all the ag lot splits that already have been processed and somebody maybe wanted more acreage? Are we going to allow one, an additional split? Maybe we do. Maybe it's not for another home site, but maybe the guy who wanted ten acres or he wanted twenty acres, but he can only get seven because of the fact that we had this in the regulations. Maybe we allow him to do a one-time boundary adjustment, acquire the additional acreage that he wanted to without creating another possibility of another home site on the property. I mean, that's one, that's one thought off the top of my head.
Solution like that.
We have to write something somewhere in the reg, in the appropriate spot that says that if you had an approved ag lot split between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-five, then you're allowed a one-time, you know, boundary adjustment, subject to staff approval. You know, we wouldn't necessarily need to take it to this.
Another question then, like on a boundary adjustment, can that be done to existing parcels? Even though you're not, say you've got a ten acre square tract and then you're thinking, well, maybe I want to sell this ten acres, but I really don't want to sell the square tract. I'd rather have it longer than, can you do just a boundary adjustment like that without going through another? It's not a split, you're just adjusting the existing boundaries. You wind up with the same amount of land in each, each tract.
Yeah, you can, you can do as many boundary adjustments as you want to because if you don't know, a boundary adjustment does not create a new parcel that you can build on. A boundary adjustment is you buying ten feet from your neighbor because you want his tree row or, or you want to build a building in this location on your property and you can't because of setbacks, so you want to buy a certain area of his land to allow you to meet a setback requirement. You're not creating a new building site. So I, I mean, I've done boundary adjustments on ag land. It's a forty acre piece and it's being divided up amongst the adjacent property or so one person gets ten acres, the other person gets ten acres and the other guy gets twenty acres. It's all boundary adjustment. They're not creating billable sites, they're just adding a certain amount of acreage to their existing farm, for example. So all those are permitted.
Changes the legal description of the land.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's a good way to do it. My opinion is I agree that forty acres should have only split once. And I think that just like Mark said, the minimum is three acres that allows somebody to build a house sheds septic system water, three acres. Or, or it can be anything beyond that, ten, ten, twenty, twenty, three, three, seven. But to, to make the people in the past that didn't have that option to have a boundary adjustment and now it's still only between two parcel owners, it doesn't create a third ownership for thinking they're going to build another house. That's how to solve that.
Yeah. So. And what, what do you do if somebody has done a, a ag lot split and, but they have a sixty acres and they split off ten, so they have a ten acre tract and a fifty acre tract. So the fifty is greater than forty, can they still do another ag lot split on that fifty acres?
Well, you got to think what you said because they can't do a ten acre split in the ag. They can only do seven.
Yeah.
Unless you're talking, so if they did a seven and now they got fifty-three?
Yeah.
Can't split it.
Can't split again if you've done the one split. Yeah. Okay.
I'm going to have to jet out of here in a little bit, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I don't know how close we're to.
We're good.
No, we're just, we're good. Keeping stuff around.
So these are the things, thing about what I would say homework for the board would be, be thinking about, you know, setbacks, be thinking about the lot width to depth ratio in there, be thinking about the minimum acreage, you know, in the ag and then reference, you know, the, it's Article three, I believe, in the subdivision regulations talking about agricultural lot splits and the seven acre and kind of how, like Steve said, what are we going to do with existing parcels? And we may or may not get to it in April, we can maybe have it on the agenda. We got three cases in April to deal with, but if there's time and there's, you know, an appetite for the war, we can have further discussions with the full board next month. So sort of if you have thoughts on this, email me and I can compile them and we'll start trying to pull up to something for you guys to, to look at and, and go from there. I got to get the April cases done first.
Good background. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other, any other business for this board? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move with your adjourn.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign.